Everyone, to the Wednesday, August 13th, 2025, meeting of the Franklin Board of Education. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Yank here. Mrs. Wackowski.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky.
Here.
Dr. Khan.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you, and the meeting has been properly posted. Could we have a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, so we will move on to community comment immediately. All participants under this agenda item must be residents of the Franklin Public School District or parents/guardians of Franklin Public School District. Students must state for the record full name and address. Must limit their statements to three minutes, with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comments. There appear to be a lot of commenters tonight. Would the board agree to extend it to half an hour?
That's fine.
Sure.
All right, we will have the, we will have a half an hour comment period. Please, please be as brief as you can. We will try and get through everyone. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy Administrative Rules 8300. And Alderman Craig wishes to speak about, about something other than Franklin Forward, so I'm going to have him come up first.
Thank you. Jason Craig, 11710 West Shields Drive. Hello, Franklin Public School Board. My name is Jason Craig, and I want to start by thanking you all for your service towards the education of our children in the city of Franklin and the open and enrolled families as well. Serving previously on the Whitwell School Board, I understand the responsibility that comes with the role. I currently serve as an alderman in the city and share the accountability that comes to our constituents. There is a position that, your role, that I have not had any visibility towards, and that is the recreation department. Recently, I've had a constituent reach out to me regarding the rec department and the pricing they received. Full disclosure, I have taken advantage of the programming that the rec department has provided, dance, swimming, soccer, and swim lessons to them in beauty. But going back to the reason for addressing the board, my resident lives within the Whitwell School District and is still a Franklin resident. They were informed that resident pricing is only for residents of the Franklin Public School District only and would have to pay out of residency pricing. I hope and pray that the statement was in error and I am, and would like to, and was made in error. I am and continue to be an advocate for stronger relationships between the city and the school district that serves the families in Franklin. With that said, I hope that Franklin Rec Department continues to be Franklin Rec Department and not Franklin asterisk Franklin Public School Resident Rec Department. And by proxy eliminate residents from the Oak Creek Franklin School District and the Whitwell School District as well. I thank you all for the consideration, and I would humbly ask for follow-up regarding the pricing for residents within Whitwell and/or Oak Creek Franklin, that they receive the same benefits as Franklin Public School District residents as well. Thank you very much.
All right, we will move on to Billy Prock now. Please just state your name and address for the record.
Billy, is this okay?
Yep.
I'm not sure that that's on. It doesn't sound very loud.
Well, it is. Yeah, all right.
We're definitely on. Sorry.
Billy Prock, now 8229 South 47th Street. I am here about the Franklin Forward referendum. I voted yes for the referendum and fully support the changes that were originally proposed, including the addition of tennis courts. However, on June 19, new drawings were released showing the complete removal of eight acres of protected forest and wetlands, an area that is under a conservation easement signed in perpetuity by the district 10 years ago. I'm not on board with this change. I'm worried about water issues that may occur due to the removal of the forest and wetlands in a location that already has issues with flooding. I'm also worried about the traffic issues that may occur on 47th Street, once Highview Drive becomes a through street. I would prefer that the original plans stand with only the tennis courts and that Highview Drive become an emergency access-only street. My questions are, one, the request to the Planning Commission to allow a special exception to the conservation easement came just weeks before the work in the forested area was to begin. Why was it left, left to the last minute? How will you move forward if the Planning Commission votes no, as was recommended by the Parks and Environmental Commission? Two, if the neighbors' concerns about water issues and traffic are realized, will the district provide any remedies or take action? Can we get that in writing? Number three, it seems like needing a lay-down area for construction equipment and materials is the driving force behind the change in plans? Is it typical to require eight acres of lay-down area for a construction project of this size? Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Peterson.
Brenda Peterson, 8255 South 47th Street. I echo what Billy just said. I did vote yes for the referendum. I'm sad now that I did and wish that I would have been far more informed. I very supportive of the schools, even though I've had no children attend this district. I'd like to read from the conservation easement and in furtherance of foregoing a further rights to the grantee, the grantor makes the following clause, which shall run with and bind in the property, protected property, in perpetuity, namely that on or over or across the protected property. The grantor without prior consent to the grantee shall not construct or place buildings or end structure, construct or make any improvements unless, notwithstanding covenant one above, the improvements is specifically and previously approved by the common council city of Franklin upon the advice of such persons, entities, and agencies. Let's skip over some. Evacuate, dredge, raid, mine, drill, or exchange topography of the land, conduct any fillings, dumpings, or depositing of any materials whatsoever, plant any vegetation not native to the protected property, operate snowmobiles, motorcycles, or all train vehicles. To have and to hold this conservation easement onto the grantee forever. I believe I heard Mr. Cromie say regarding other districts having referendums that in perpetuity, meaning forever, said that tonight, meaning forever, that land really should be protected. It was signed over 10 years ago. It's disappointing when we were told last week Monday that the traffic study was not done in opening up that road. If you're responsible for children at your school, you should also take responsibility for the children and the families in our neighborhoods, and a traffic study should absolutely be done to ensure that we make the right choices for the neighborhoods that are right around the school. I purposely bought near school, my last two homes were near schools because they're good neighborhoods to live in. You're spending $125 million on a school that will soon be landlocked. Future planning, population study, long-term planning, I had a very hard time finding any of that on the website. Lots of videos, but really documentation to say, after you spend $125 million on all these updates, what's going to happen then? How long is this going to last? I heard Dr. Brennan say last week Monday that this won't even meet demand. So I did vote yes this time, but in the future, I don't know that I will automatically ever vote yes for a referendum again. Please make better choices for our neighborhood, our community.
Mark Zidzik, sorry. I hope that was close.
Very close. J G's.
Not close at all.
Mark, J G's, 823 South 47th. Like we asked, well, my neighbors have already said, we're pretty much all in agreement that there's potential for water problems, a little concern about the excess traffic. I think we're looking for, you know, we're not looking for no tennis courts. We really just want what was originally proposed before we voted on this back last fall. I know there's a lot of tennis players and such, and I have a friend here who has daughter in tennis. Like I said, we're not looking to, not have tennis courts, but just give us what we had voted for prior to the election. You know, there's tennis court, we've proved that, but we never foresaw an additional soccer court, additional parking. I actually live one house off that road there. That extra traffic, there's a bus stop there. I know when the, the ground bell was built, in that time that, during construction, 47th was a major thoroughfare through there, and people were going 50 miles an hour, so that's a big concern, you know, that excess traffic there. So I'm sure my neighbors have more to add. That's all I got for them.
Thank you. Eddie Mock.
How could you?
Oh, and do all the tennis players want to come up at the same time? Please tell us your names.
Eddie Mock, 73819. Adding tennis courts to our high school isn't just about giving a small group of athletes a place to play. It's about creating opportunities for all students to be active, engaged, and connected to the school. Tennis is one of the few sports people can play for a lifetime. It's low-impact, and so it's accessible for students who may not participate in high school-type sports. Yet, it builds strength, agility, and cardio basketball. It also develops important life skills, discipline, focus, patience, and sportsmanship that benefit students in the classroom and beyond. Right now, students who want to play tennis often have to travel off campus, as our team does at the Greendale Village Club, which limits participation and discourages new players from joining our team. Having our own courts on campus means more students can join practice safely after school and feel pride in representing their school on their own home courts. Tennis also can open the door for hosting home matches and tournaments, which can draw visitors from other schools, boost school spirit, and even bring revenue to our communities through visiting, your visiting teams and their families. They can also be used for PE classes after school clubs, summer camps, and community recreation, meaning the benefits extend far beyond just the tennis courts. Thank you.
Priscilla Singh, 8173 South Shallow Circle. We also understand that the land, trees, and environments are important, and we don't want to ignore those concerns, but at the same time, these courts will be used every day by students for many years, giving a lot of the traditions to be acted on in the team that represents our school. And right now, our team has to travel off studying, where they practice and match, which actually creates more traffic in other neighborhoods and makes it harder for students who don't have rights to participate at all. And we've already built a successful tennis program without having courts in our school, and having our own courts at our school would give us a safe, consistent place to practice and compete. And we also want to respect the neighbors, but this is a long-term investment in students and in school's very developed benefit generations to come. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ethan. I'm at 416 Western Sodexo. I'm a student in Franklin High School, and I've been on the marching team for three years now. And in my last three years here, I've never been able to walk outside of my own school and have tennis courts ready to play on. I always had to rely on my parents to drive me to practices before I had my license. I always wished that we had campuses, courts on the campus, and now we have the opportunity to create new courts while benefiting for the current members of the tennis team and the Franklin youth who are interested in playing. We need 10 courts to allow JV and varsity to practice at the same time. Right now, the Park and Recreation Center of Franklin has youth lessons taking place at Ken Window Park in Franklin. There are only two courts there, which has a maximum number of kids, which fills up the room. If we had new courts for Franklin Public High School, we could have more kids interested in joining tennis and in the future, potentially joining the team. The kids in the area deserve better. Tennis courts will provide a valuable resource for the youth and adult population of Franklin and a new source of revenue for Franklin High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
4453, 4453 West Bickert Field Drive. Hi, my name is Rohan Penalado, and this year, the boys team is ranked top 16 in the state. And in the last few years, the boys team and girls team have qualified for the team championship. Both of our tennis programs are some of the finest in the state. We need 10 courts at Franklin High School to give us a consistent place to practice. We think it will let us host a conference tournament, which requires 10 courts, and it will give us love gym classes, actually teach tennis, so kids could grow throughout the program. Once they reach high school, it would be really good. And 10 courts is really the only we need right now. As our programs keep growing, we'll all bring 14 courts to help us stay competitive and meet that demand for years to come. Every other team in our conference has tennis courts. This is one of our programs. In the end, building tennis courts will just provide a facility for helping support both our programs and helping kids. Thank you.
Denise Groniger.
I don't know if they heard you.
Denise, sorry, Denise Groniger.
Can you hear me? Is it? Is that better? Yeah? Taking out my mic.
Over that way.
Okay. So I have a couple things. Do you have a no-practical alternative and analysis agreement signed by the DNR? It's very important. That is something that needs to be done. So if that hasn't been done, it needs to be done before you take out 8.8 acres of trees. And said, did you plan when you created this referendum? Where was the construction equipment going to go? Because right now, you're going to take down 8.8 acres of trees for construction equipment. So in your plan, where was, where was this construction equipment going to be before that, before you did this? I really feel like we were not fully informed. I ask you, again, to refer to the city's comprehensive master plan that protects our wetlands. These are wetlands. There's agreements in force that were signed. So I'm, I don't understand how we can break every single agreement that was made to protect this land that is behind the high school. 47th Street is a subdivision. It is now going to be, if you put that road off of, it comes in, and there's going to be a parking lot, the kids from the high school are going to drive on it? Everybody's going to go to this parking lot for this tennis courts that everyone's going to use? It's now going to be like 51st Street. It's a subdivision. I can tell you that my son plays in high school. My son goes to Franklin High School. I supported the referendum. I supported the tennis courts that were in the original referendum. So I'm not fighting the tennis courts. I'm fighting the fact that you're taking down another 8.8 acres of trees that were not part of the plan. So I'm just telling you that it's going to be an issue with parking and, we live in a subdivision. I, every scheme that I go to for my son for basketball in a high school, you, there's not an entrance through a subdivision to get to the high school. We are now creating a subdivision drive-through to get to the high school. I don't support that whatsoever. That was not part of the referendum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Carroll, 4525 West Woodward Drive, Franklin. I think our tennis players summed up our concerns pretty well. I guess if it's not obvious, I'd like to just point out that all of these tennis players are old enough that by the time these tennis courts come to be, they won't get to enjoy them. So these tennis players are really advocating for future tennis players and for the future of the community, not for their personal gain. This is not them wanting tennis courts today that they can play on. They recognize, and we recognize as parents, I'm the parent of two tennis players, and we recognize that tennis courts will make the community better in many ways and future tennis players better, even though personally, none of our children or these players will be able to benefit. We hope that the tennis courts stay at a minimum of 10. As Rohan nicely pointed out, 12 or 14 would be great, but, but we really can't go less than 10. And that's the message we really want to relay, is we need 10 tennis courts to have a competitive tennis program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kay Seemanson.
I'm glad you have a microphone, because I have a very soft voice. I'm Kay Seemanson. I live at 8283 South 47th Street, and I have worked with students for 38 years, and I understand how important sports are. That is not our complaint. My complaint is the legal document that the school board has had for 10 years, and have you had legal counsel advise you to break this, this contract that you made with the city to break that easement, which would destroy the eight acres of woodland and the wetlands? My other concern is that we were told August 4th at the hearing by the school officials when they were asked, have the DNR been contacted? And I said, yes. Well, I have filed a complaint with the DNR regarding the wetlands that will be disturbed if you go ahead with this breaking the easement, and they said they have never been contacted, which is very upsetting. Also, I, I want to know how in good conscience, in, as educators, I believe we should have tennis courts for the kids, but I don't believe that the environment should be at all costs destroyed. Disturbing the environment is as detrimental to the kids as beneficial is tennis to the kids. So please consider that. Are you open to any alternative solutions? I have been to like five meetings so far. We've told our story over and over again. Mr. Cromie was instructed to come back to the school board with new ideas and see if any of the concerns would be met. We were told by the mayor to please go to these meetings, let your, let your voices be heard. We have come over and over, told the same story over and over. I don't know if you have heard what we're saying, so please consider not breaking easement. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole and Ethan Schlacks, do you want to come together?
We have three minutes each to speak.
I mean, we're running out of time, and we have, we have several people that like to speak.
Can you hear me? My name is Nicole Schlacks. Address is 8213 South 47th Street. We recently received plans dated June 2025, provided by a Franklin Planning Department member, that clearly shows the school's intention to remove the majority of the forest and wetlands currently protected under a conservation agreement. The plans are detailed. However, at the same time, neighbors, including myself, were presented with a much simpler mock-up that only showed a small portion of the northwestern forest being cleared, with no indication of the full extent of forest removal. It's important to note that neighbors, including myself, have been supportive of the tennis courts. I believe the real conflict is not the courts themselves, but the unnecessary addition of a practice field. The practice field would cause the loss of more forest and wetlands than necessary, negatively impacting property values, privacy, the health of the surrounding ecosystem, and, as we have recently seen, create a greater flood risk. Our shared goal as a community, whether it be tennis player or neighbor, should be to build the courts while preserving as much of the natural environment as possible and renewing a conservation agreement to protect the remaining forests and wetlands and maintain a substantial wooded buffer between our properties on 47th Street and Forest Hill Avenue and the tennis courts. Finally, the proposed access road through this area in Highview should be designated as emergency access only. Converting it to a regular through street would raise safety concerns for children and families, given the proximity to residential areas. And that's, thank you for your time.
Yeah, again, I'd like to touch on what my wife and my neighbors have been saying. This is not an attack on the tennis team. This is not an attempt to prevent any tennis courts from being built. I think many of us understand the benefit of having those courts in there. My wife and I both played tennis in high school. We play tennis currently to this day. It would be nice to have those there. I think we would benefit from that more than a lot of the current students will, obviously, because it won't be done in time. Again, but that being said, I think the issue is more so how, or I guess the plan is where those tennis courts are going to be, and even really more so with this practice court. I think with the practice soccer field that's there. Again, I addressed at the meeting last week on August 4th about documentation as to reasonable alternatives for the plan that was put in place, or I should say, changed the plan for the referendum, and what alternatives were looked at and why those alternatives were not feasible. I was told that essentially, they weren't sure if there was any documentation as to what those alternatives were, and if there were, they would have been on the FAQ of the Franklin Forward website, and they were not there. There is nothing that talks about any reasonable alternatives. I would urge the board to look at drafting a new plan, something that would incorporate tennis courts as originally shown in the original rendering of the referendum, and reconsider using the space as a construction site, and reconsider whether or not this potential JV practice soccer field is needed in that space.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have two more left, so please, please keep it brief. Jennifer Metzger.
Jennifer Metzger, 7977 South 47th Street. I just want to reiterate what a lot of my neighbors have already said, in that this is not a us versus them situation. This is how can we do what's best for our community and our school? We all voted mostly of yes for the referendum, for the original referendum. So we want the kids to have the tennis courts. I actually applaud that the school district is doing things for some of the lesser-known groups, whether tennis, autos, you know, my kids were not sporty kids, they weren't using the football field, but they definitely use those tech classrooms. So I think the long-term plan is amazing. Our biggest concern is, why are we taking out eight and a half acres that were not originally proposed to be taken out? What are the DNR ramifications? What are the drainage ramifications? I live down at the bottom of that hill towards Drexel. We get a lot more water than we did before those other practice fields were built a few years ago. So what is going to be the long-term environmental impact of taking out those root systems of those trees that are soaking up a lot of that water when we get torrential downfall? Again, the other concern would be the traffic safety. Even now, 47th Street is oftentimes a raceway up and down. It's very dangerous when you get up on Forest Hill, there's that little back walkway from the Saber Center, a lot of parents picking up their kids there, and they are flying up and down that road. So it's already dangerous, and then if we open that up, I think safety issues are bigger. So, it's already dangerous. And then if we open that up, I think, um, safety issues are a bigger concern. So, again, encouraging that street to just be emergency access as it was originally intended makes the most sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Lethleen, please.
I promise, I have one page and I write big. So, I'm Tim Lethleen, uh, forty-three oh four, West Minnesota Court. I'm the parent of two children who attend Franklin High School. My son, who, uh, is here tonight, uh, is on the Franklin varsity tennis team as well as teaches, co-teaches, uh, the Park and Rec Tennis, listens through the summer. But there had been a couple of mentions of, hey, could we get by with less than ten courts? Um, and from a parent's perspective, I just wanted to share a couple of things that have, have been a little bit of a struggle. If thirty-two boys, forty-plus girls, full practice is a big deal. That's been brought up. Physical education classes, being able to get on the courts, great. There's been talk of, you know, being able to host invitations, invitationals and tournaments. And as we become a stronger program, we have more players, we're more competitive, uh, we're more dominant on the court. And to be honest with you, the matches take longer. Our kids aren't being blown out six oh, six one, and you know what? Match is done in twenty minutes. Rohan, who's back there, had a couple of matches that went dang close to an hour and a half. And what that does is it means our, our meets go longer and longer. Our conference tournament that we had to do on eight courts at a, a school in Racine County ended up being eleven and a half hours. Eight AM to seven thirty PM. The kids missed an entire school day and then missed any evening opportunity to make up their work. So, by having ten courts to be able to do that on, we start to kind of get it back to a reasonable timeframe and still execute the sport and have the fun. So, the last couple of weeks of school, our kids missed three days, three full days of school just because of trying to get those timeframes. And there really isn't a place, especially with our team growing and growing, to have that opportunity. Um, and then the other piece is, you know, the Village Club has been great, uh, to be able to use for the, the practices for the boys and girls, given that we don't have a site. But as soon as practice is over, those gates close. So, our kids want to go and they want to, they want to practice. They want to sharpen their skills after and they end up either at the Green Dale Community Center, which is lighted, but then, uh, ends up being closed for whatever reason, uh, or not closed, but full. And our kids end up behind Green Dale High School in the dark, or Whittnall High School in the dark, trying to play and get ready for their next match. And I kind of see that as a bit of a safety issue. My wife and I have been kind of nervous knowing that our kids are out there playing tennis and, and who knows where. So, we're looking forward to the kids in the future being able to have those courts, have a home field to be able to practice after practice, sharpen their skills a- and have that opportunity too. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Um, that's, that's all the people I had signed up. Um, I do appreciate, um, everybody's decorum. I know this has been, um, a difficult, a difficult subject over the last month. Um, and, um, I appreciate the, um, the opportunity to have conversations, um, with people. And, um, we all live in the same community and I appreciate that, um, I appreciate that everybody, uh, was well behaved because we've had, uh, issues in the past with other, um, items. And, um, I, I just, it's appreciated. Um, thank you for the community. Um, all right, um, we'll go forward. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Wackowski, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Um, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Mrs. Larson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, school board calendar, school board retreat, Wednesday, August twentieth, uh, at the ECC at five thirty. Board Policy Committee meeting Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty-five at the ECC at nine thirty. And also Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty-five at the ECC at one PM. Uh, regular Board of Education meeting both September tenth and September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at the ECC at six. And a Board Policy Committee meeting Tuesday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five at ten AM. Um, and the Homecoming Parade at FHS is Wednesday, October first at five thirty PM. Uh, District Administrator update, Dr. Bennen, please.
All right. Thank you and good evening. Thank you for being here and for the comment to engage. We do have an agenda item. Uh, couple in on the board meeting where we'll address some of the updates that have been made since our neighbor meetings. So, thank you for sticking around. Uh, so this past week, uh, this exciting aspect that Mr. Cromie talked about in our annual meeting is we welcome back our new teachers. Uh, this event takes place at Forest Park. It's always great to see the energy and the smiling faces. Uh, this year, when we took our new staff picture, it was two rows. I remember my first year being four years ago, three and a half years ago, and it was four rows. So, I asked Laura to pull the approximate numbers. And this year, we're approximately, right now, we never calculate till we're fully back in school, at twenty-six new staff. Uh, last year, we were at forty-four new staff, and two years ago, we were at sixty-six new staff. Uh, so the numbers speak, I think, for the great work that's taking place in the district and our staff, uh, to meet our student needs. Our transition days currently are taking place at the high school. So, that's for our ninth graders to get acclimated to the high school ahead of time, kind of release some of those nerves, learn a little bit more about, uh, what a typical day looks like and what opportunities there are before and after school also. Uh, sixth grade transition days at Forest Park will take place next week, the nineteenth and twentieth. It's always exciting to see the students coming back into the building and around. Uh, we'll start to see buses doing practice routes soon and really gearing up for the new year. Uh, this week, we also trained our cross-categorical educational assistants, our student service teams and some administrators in our non-violence de-escalation training. Uh, so that took place today and it'll take place again tomorrow. Uh, we've really started to incorporate more EAs in that training from the feedback we've gotten about learning how to work with students when they're maybe not in their best moment or escalated. This Saturday, the Franklin Education Foundation's hosting a staff and family gathering at the Franksville Craft Beer Garden from five to seven, so it's open to anybody. Um, it's an event for all staff and families. They will have food trucks. They're also in live music. There's a playground for kids. It's very family-friendly. Uh, one of our staff members' families actually runs this beer garden, so they're also donating ten percent of the proceeds back to the Education Foundation. Um, this is an exciting event for the Education Foundation as they're also announcing the Excellent Educator Awards that are given out each year. Uh, so this will be an event that that is first announced at. So, hopefully, we'll see many of you there. Uh, band camp kicked off last week at the high school. We start out, I've heard, learned about the pancake breakfast uh, that UMS group and parents help, and the students are up there, uh, working on their program for this coming school year. They've been, uh, state awarded many times and, and, uh, so we're excited for the performance this year. And last week, we also had our third annual leadership summit. It's a two-day event with over one hundred teachers from our district that take on leadership roles to help leave our, lead our school improvement teams. A lot of what we saw in the annual meeting, or you'll see in your Franklin focal, that'll hit your mailbox in the next two days, uh, is the exciting things taking place in our schools. And that comes with a lot of the teacher leaders that help lead our action steps, set those action steps, uh, and make sure that we're getting to the student level of them understanding where their learning's at and where they're going next. So, though we don't have students back every day, we are fully busy within the district and lots of opportunities to engage with our staff, students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, school board liaison reports, um, don't know that we have any. Um, everybody, uh, I, I got a, um, I got an email from Principal at Pleasant View. I suspect that, um, my liaison school, I suspect that everybody will be getting those shortly about, uh, setting up meetings throughout the year. So, we'll go forward with school and community engagement reports. Please.
Well, a number of us were at, uh, National Night Out last week, which is always a fun time to engage with the community, meet lots of people, um, talk about, talk about our Franklin Public Schools and just kind of a fun, fun community night. And I was just going to comment, just being around the district, dropping a kid off at band camp. There's, there's students all over. You might not see them, but, and, you know, they're not in school yet, but it is fun to see the, you know, the football team is out, the cross-country kids are out running early in the morning. Um, the school is kind of coming to life again and it's just a really fun, fun time. So, let's, we'll celebrate that.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Uh, reports, presentations and other board business. Uh, Ed for Employment Update, Dr. Mo, uh, Mr. Vollo and Mr. Thompson, please.
So, in, um, the Situation Report that was posted, you see some links at your spot tonight. I added the one-pager. So, that's something that we use internally that I know you're used to looking at in the past. So, it's not new, but it's updated with the new data that you saw. I just wanted you to know to follow along. The one-pager that shows the college and career readiness numbers. Those are also indicated in the plan. Just a reminder that to count on the college side or count on the career side, you have to have two of the things on the list. So, the, the percentage is not an average of the percentages. The percentage is how many kids hit two of that, just so you remember. I know it's been a year. It's been a year since we've been here. Um, this will be a first read. So, tonight to ask questions, we will be bringing this back next time for a vote. Um, I know in the past, we've always brought it to the board, but this is a slight change that was recommended to us, that we do a first read with an actual vote for approval. I'll turn it over to Mr. Vollo and Mr. Thompson, who I just have to add. Um, I've worked in multiple districts, do a tremendous job knowing, um, the ACP work, college and career readiness pathways, work-based learning, all the things on this list. Um, better than some other places I've been. We're very lucky. So, I'll let them speak to that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would just say that largely, I appreciate the board and the community's support enabling us to do the things we're doing at the high school. So, when you look at those college and career readiness indicators, career readiness, you know, we associate more with education for employment, right? However, that starts with students attending school, right, which is one of the indicators. That starts with students taking courses when they're freshmen, when they're in middle school, you know, getting exposure to things when they're even upper elementary in terms of different ways of doing things. So, the curriculum you support enables us to do this. Academic career planning isn't a nine-twelve thing. That is a, you know, four K twelve thing in terms of our students becoming who they are. So, as we think about this, just understand that one of the aspects of the plan we always have is reflecting on academic career planning and what that looks like. So, growing, you know, whether it's advisory at the high school, um, or, you know, like different, you know, structures and plans at middle school and other places, how do students know who they are and what they want to be, right? Knowing those will change. Exploring things like what are the industry credentials that students can earn when they're in high school? And really trying to help every student find themselves and find experiences, and more is always better, from both sides of this. And then I think, you know, we've talked about it for several years, but the idea of life readiness is not just this, right? That is being a critical thinker. That is the aspects for profile of a graduate. So, largely, I think the plan should look very familiar to you. However, right, understand that the, um, relentlessness, I suppose, we have for it is trying to help students understand these things. Every one of our students in advisory, including my advisees who are seniors this year, right, has, since they were freshmen, taken these college career readiness indicators to build their resume, right? So, they get a document that has all these on there and they talk about how they met it. And they've done that since they were freshmen. So, when they were getting ready for letters of recommendation at the end of junior year and asking teachers or principals, um, for a letter before summer, which is the best way to do it, um, so I have all summer to write it, right, they were saying, "Here's my brag sheet. Here's my resume." And they were pulling from that. So, students, you know, increasingly need to understand these things because we know these things matter and they, and they do. So, I don't have anything specific to add besides thank you, uh, for supporting it and thank you to our community for supporting these, uh, opportunities for our students. Um, and understand that when we look at, you know, growth and achievement and readiness, we want all of our students to have these experiences. So, how do we get students who haven't traditionally had them to have them, students from service groups to have them? Students with disabilities would be an example of that. So, Andy's been a key partner in this and I really appreciate his efforts to help us, um, do these things, but also do them well. We're not trying to just check a box and say a hundred percent did it. We're trying to do it deep. We're trying to do it to fidelity in a way that we know works for kids.
Yeah, I guess to add off of what, um, Mr. Vollo said, um, you know, at the high school, I think speaking to what Annalee said, having a low turnover of staff has helped build a team that all of us are advisors and we're kind of seeing that work kind of come that, you know, students are, and the staff are becoming more aware of the opportunities. I mean, there's a robust high school with lots of opportunities to find out. So, if you're around for a few years as a staff member, you start to see a lot of these things. You learn about what your colleagues are kind of doing. And I think it kind of speaks to moving forward with kind of looking at some of the quantitative or qualitative data. So, that's kind of some of the goals, is to kind of get some more on the ground, like some of those, you know, anecdotal stories. And those are what I get to hear on a regular basis from the kids is, you know, young people maybe aren't working all the time, but they're making choices that are much more informed about things they want to do. Um, I think this summer, we had about fifteen CNAs who had just turned sixteen, um, complete the program. And some of them, um, we had a hiring event last Monday. I think some of them are going to see job offers and potentially work two full years and maybe get up to nine hundred to a thousand hours to really master something before they graduate. So, um, I think that that's a testament to all the work that everyone's kind of done with ACP, uh, of our young, um, students kind of making more informed and motivated to kind of make better choices about, um, opportunities in the future.
Thank you. Um, all right, we'll get to questions in a second. I know some people have them. I'd just like to thank Mr. Vollo and Mr. Thompson for their hard work um, in education for employment area. Um, it's clearly work that they're passionate about. From helping to get the Saber Business Alliance off the ground, to establishing mentorship programs, to spearheading the profile of a graduate work. Mike and Andy, um, show the kind of servant leadership we are so proud of at Franklin Public Schools. So, thank you very much. Mr. Vollo continues to work closely with Mr. Thompson, who appears tireless in advocating for students and placing them in the, in the correct opportunity in the real world. And that's what this is all about. So, um, I appreciate your efforts so much. Um, Angie, you have a question?
Nope, I'm just saying an appreciation thing. I remember when the state threw in a statute saying we had to have Ed to employment things and, you know, it could have just been a check-off box that we had to do, but here in Franklin, we take it seriously and our, you guys are hustling hard to make sure every kid has great opportunity. So, thank you.
And I think I want to second Mike and Angie's comments that Franklin able to offer all the internships and apprenticeships, including the CNA, uh, is a great asset to our graduates and preparing them very well to enter workforce immediately, in fact, with good-paying jobs after high school. So, thank you for the tremendous job, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Mary, please.
Um, just under the community partner, um, column, if you will, um, we just, is that's the businesses that we?
Correct. Yeah.
Um, and, I mean, obviously, from twenty sixteen at twenty-nine to twenty twenty-five, two oh two, are most of them in the Franklin Business Park or how far out do you?
You know, I've, I've, we've had kids drive thirty, forty minutes for an opportunity, um, some of them. So, they're kind of all over. I mean, the Business Park's going to be a major place. I would say over half to two-thirds are going to be in the, in the Franklin immediate area. Some are going to go into Oak Creek. Some are going to kind of be, um, just around where there's opportunities that they kind of find.
So, kids are the ones who are locating these partners?
Um, so, I mean, some of them come through my work. I mean, I sit on a Chamber of Commerce. So, South suburban Chamber of Commerce, um, is Franklin, Oak Creek, Greenfield, Greendale-ish, um, areas. So, I think that's kind of been a big, big key. Um, Franklin Business Park, um, as well, has kind of been a big player. I mean, this year, I think we had, it was five students just for the city of Franklin in turn. So, it's just kind of, you know, takes time and building those relationships. And then, you know, a kid has a great opportunity and then they tell their friends and then that's kind of how things kind of grow.
Great. That's impressive.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you so much. All right, Franklin Forward update, uh, Dr. Bennen, Mr. Hacker, at all.
All right, thank you. Yes, we have Mr. Hacker with us tonight from Cadence Consulting. We also have our presentation Mitch from CD Smith and Devin Page and Jeff with PRA, our architectural firm. So, we'll present and then they're also here to, uh, add any other comments and answer any questions along the way. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak a little bit tonight. This is our fifth update, uh, for the board um, in regards to our Franklin Forward work since the passing of the referendum in November. Tonight really serves as an update to the board on the interactions with the city um, and, uh, other interactions we've had, working through our next pieces, which are the site plan approval, the conservation of easement mitigation and the conditional use permit, uh, all on the agenda for the August twenty-first, uh, Planning Commission meeting next week. So, the overview tonight, we're going to go through the site plans, adjustments to site plans from community feedback, update on the next city meetings that are taking place as far as planning, commission and common council, uh, and the next steps. So, a little bit of a background, um, you never know when people join the journey or understand all the work that's been done at the board table on the district level throughout this. So, just the last two updates to the board, we are in front of you on May seventh and June eighteenth. That's a quick agenda from those evenings. Uh, but continuing to go over how the design was coming through and the work was happening. If we think way back to the updates in January, it was just getting the core team together, establishing our times to meet, establishing the people in front of us that are going to be a part of the meetings, uh, part of that development, um, and our other partnerships. We get to the March meeting. We were able to share a lot of the feedback from the stakeholders uh, within the community, from the board, uh, from our students, from our staff, as we start to develop and think about what the design looks like. I think what's unique about going to a referendum or building for schools versus if I ran a bank and I was building a bank is that if I'm doing the bank, I know my funding and I'm going in and we're drawing up architectural plans and we're going- I'm going in and we're drawing up architectural plans, and we're going all in right away. And when you're working with a school, you're working with taxpayer dollars and support. So until that referendum's passed and we know what we have to work with beforehand, we're identifying what our needs are. And we did that through a variety of avenues, through a master facility study, we'll get into that more in some slides, through enrollment studies, through community surveys, through envisioning, what does learning look like 40 years from now, not planning for today, but for how learning is developing, because it already looks different than how I learned. So this development process takes time, but once the referendum's passed, now we can start to get together and start to move those pieces. So we know the needs we have, now we're looking at the site, and now we're really developing the actualizations of this, the architectural plans that go into it, looking at the site, bringing on point of beginning to look at the civil engineering aspects and all of that work. So that's developed highly since the referendum, that's typical to how it's working on a school system. So the evolution of the pre-planning, November 8th, 2023, that's not a typo, this started almost two years ago when we brought forth the master, actually started before that, right? We brought forward the master facility study, August, September of 2023. Then we went through a variety of monthly meetings, talking about what the visioning looks like at all of our schools across the district, and covering that also with the facility needs that we learned through the study. November, we looked at the high school visioning, the board came back together in December, and we had some really vivid conversations about what we learned from the over $96 million of maintenance across our district, what we learned about envisioning spaces that needed to continue to grow. We'll get deeper into that, but for instance, well, we'll get deeper into it, I won't forecast on that one. But we talked a lot about the learning that had happened over the last year at that December retreat. We had discourse at that time and throughout about, we do own acreage, about 200 acres off Ryan Road. Do we move the high school? Is there going to be more opportunity if we go there versus the current site? Was reached an agreement that the current site is the right place. They're doing our MD Roffers enrollment study, which is available on the website, so reach out, we can get you connected with that if you couldn't find it. We know that the enrollment is continuing to increase in Franklin, that's a gift we have. We know that with the work we can do at Franklin High School, we will continue to be able to meet that capacity for the 10 years that's projected out and even beyond that. So at that time, that's the right site. The Saber Center's only just over a decade new, so moving the full facility and leaving a Saber Center, leaving a football field, there just wasn't opportunity that really made sense to shift that. So that's when the conversation then started to shift to this current site. The survey then came out between April and June, administering the survey, June being the results of the survey to the board. Survey looked at a larger referendum ask of potential 180 million, 185 million. There was images of the four phases that were included in that, just including in this one, as we're focused on more of the high school this evening, with those being the items coming up with city requirements. This was the image at that time. So we've heard a lot about the tennis courts and the woods not being talked about, all that comes through the development. There's no skirting of things or trying to slide things through, which I've heard through a variety of meetings. I can tell you that that's not how our team operates. We have core values we stick strong to, so does this board. This image doesn't draw large woods that's in that space. I understand there's a variety of images out there, that is part of the development process, where it goes, we'll get a little deeper into that. But this survey showed specifically in this portion for the high school, that there would be 54% support for that aspect of a referendum if the board decided to go that route. In June, the board came to resolution last year, 2024. We held a variety of pre-referendum engagements, informing the community, informing the city, having listening sessions, doing tours at the high school, being available to do those items, that led to a successful referendum in November. I build a lot of this background, just because I don't know when people join the journey, and I think it's, it's important to know that it has been a journey, it hasn't been a one-moment thing, it hasn't taken place overnight or been hidden, it's been very transparent and visible to the community. We've gone back as far as looking at what, what was Franklin? Because we know Franklin has developed fast, and over time, it continues to grow. Like I said, we're one of the fortunate districts in the state where we have a growing enrollment, because the city has ability to continue to grow. We see houses going up, we see subdivisions going up. This is the aerial view in 1963, the same year that the high school was built, the initial high school. We'll talk about how that's grown over time, just like our community's grown. All around that site is farmland. As we look at it, that none of the homes of people sitting in this room or others are yet in the site, the school's being developed on that site. You see a lot of vegetation in the spaces, and like I said, a lot of undeveloped property so far in that area. We advance a few years, about 19 years, right? We're looking at that space, the coloring gets weird with Google Maps, I can't explain that part to you, but we've evolved the development of the high school at this point. So this is, 18 years has passed since the prior aerial. You're going to notice, and this time, we've had four additions take place to the high school. So 63 was built, 68, 70, 74, we were adding additions to the high school. So it is growing with the community growing. You see the construction of the original fire department, obviously that's changed in time also with the community. We don't yet see the houses growing around this space, we see a lot of the vegetation that's within it. We advance another 19 years, 2000, we're looking at how it's developing, right? We're seeing that first, first kind of corner of homes that's going in around the house, we're seeing, I'm sorry, around the school, a lot of the vegetation areas within that area. At this point, the high school had gone through two more additions in 95 and 98. The excitement is this, is we're seeing our community grow, we're seeing our district grow, right? We're seeing opportunities for students. At this time also is when you see the stubbed-out road at Highview Road, Highview coming in. So that road was stubbed out in 2000 already, with the forward thinking of how this property is going to continue to develop, because we're seeing the projection in the trajectory of how the city of Franklin is developing. So a lot of foresight on leaders and board members prior to any of us sitting at this table right now. We flash, we jump forward to 2025, we've had one additional referendum passed in that time for another addition, so if you're counting now, I believe we're up to six additions, meeting the needs of the community, exceeding it, I would say, we're high performing. And also renovation, some renovation to the space at this time. This is when we saw the Saber Center come, and our ability to continue to grow our fine arts programming within the district. And looking at that, we're seeing a lot of the farmland and woodland that existed through those first three aerials, no longer exist through those neighborhoods, in some areas that have been developed in the school property also, a lot of the areas being developed around that school area. And this time also, that reconstruction of the fire department, the firehouse has taken place. I think that important points to point out here too, that 1963 image, when just the first part of the high school was built, the gym was built, if you have been in that gym today, or in 1963, it's the same. The floor's changed, but it's the same. So you've seen six additions and renovations to the high school, but nothing to the athletic facilities. So when we talk about what this referendum passed, we have one gym in the school, the same one gym that served 1963 graduates. That has not grown, we have one weight room, it's converted classrooms. A lot of people saw this, if you were following along, two years ago, we went through what those look like. The weight equipment doesn't fit in the rooms, we make it work. The weight, the, wait, the, um, sorry, wrestling room, directly adjacent to the weight room, converted classroom, and the pool is original to the building also. If we forget the stats from that, I think Andy Daniels, 1,000 gallons of water, it was losing a week. So, athletic facility, more than that, yeah, athletic facilities had not been touched in this time, we'd grown the fine arts. And so, this referendum, referendum brings us the opportunity to grow that. A Division One high school typically has at least a four-station gym, again, we have that one station. So we're rightsizing programming, that doesn't even touch yet on the career and technical education. Through this time, when we talked about additions, what I missed in a prior aerial is that our autos program, which is very undersized even now, was at that time, got moved to an even smaller room at the high school to make room for some other areas. So, the CTE, Career Technical Education Spaces, haven't been touched through much of this at all, unless they've been downsized to a different room to shift in an area that's not very visible in the school. So a little bit of, of background to what got us to that referendum point, and talking about the needs, and talking about this being the site that we're going to stay on. So once that referendum passes, we get our team established, January hits, we bring on point of beginning, they couldn't be with us tonight, they'd been with us and at many city meetings over the last number of months, we do a site plan. So what you're looking at now is a very colorful site plan, but you're seeing that the green is the woodland on the property, so this is current image, topography work from the civil engineers. You're seeing that purplish color representing the wetland, you're seeing, I don't know if you call that a peach color we'll go with, the flood plain. So when we've met with a variety of community members throughout and looked at what's the next space on the property that's developable, the option that has been looked at is that southeast corner. People have wondered about, what about Drexel and 51st? So we see in Drexel and 51st, not only do we have woodland, we have a flood plain and wetland going through there to try to make any type of practice field out of that space that's cutting directly through it. The rest of the, you see a lot near the fire station in that upper-left corner, again, you're looking at wetland and woodland, in that area, and also not a space that's big enough to fit the needs that we have. This map just shows, it's the same map, it's a deeper topography. We use the more colorful one, because it's easier to see from, from where you're at, but it's showing the same imagery. Why does that matter when you do a site plan? What matters, because we're, we're now know we can go forward with the work we need to do, we know the needs that we have, that's what we asked in the referendum, we haven't veered from those, from that ask, we won't, that's legally bound by that referendum question. So when we look at the fieldhouse space that's going to come onto the property, so that bottom-left corner, isn't just a fieldhouse, it's the nadatorium, it's the beginning of the innovation hall that goes into our CTE space that's being rightsized, it's taking over a green field that we have, the field that's directly north adjacent to the building now, between there and the high school football field. We also did a deep study on who uses that field. What if somebody walks by every day at 5:00 PM, are they going to see people on it? Absolutely. What if somebody walks by every night at 11:00 PM and they say nobody's ever on it? Well, they're probably not on it at 11:00 PM. However, our study of it shows that it's a very utilized field, that it's not a field we can go without having, we wouldn't have lacrosse practice, we have, you can see the variety of activities that take place out there. We also have an unsafe discus shot put area currently by the football field that we need to move to an upper practice field. That doesn't affect the area here, but it just affects that we have minimal practice space, minimal space to continue to expand within the areas we have. Sometimes it gets misknown too, that this is just for athletics, physical education is a state requirement. We don't have an option to educate our students in physical education or health education, that's a must, and our space needs to meet that. Right now, some of those classes are taking place in hallways, each class period, taking places in classrooms, converted old bandrooms. So the space that's being looked at in the physical education aspect is used during the day. So I just want to clarify that, because I've heard differently, that we're going to have this space sitting quietly, this space will not be sitting quietly. It's also being well-developed for community use, there's a walking track internally that community can now walk in the school, but is going to have even better access to just an indoor walking track through our, our cold months of winter, and weight room access. So defining that, we've looked at the site, we've looked at the need and developed quickly into that. This picture I like to utilize, this is from about February, this is a lot of the people, key players in the room today and many that aren't here. This is physically the boxes of the big pieces of the work that we need to do that are now approved by referendum, and moving them around to see is there a way to avoid that practice field? Is there a way to utilize a site plan differently? Through months of doing this, like the site plan that we've come up with is best meeting the needs of what we've identified for our students and staff. Proactively, we knew that removing trees can create emotion. None of us love the idea of removing trees, and so we did proactively communicate with the neighbors. We worked with the city to get the list of neighbors that are within 500 feet of the school district that they would also be doing their mailings to. We used that same mailing list, offered two meetings that were ahead of city meetings, so it had a common council on the 20th of May and Planning Commission on the 22nd, where we were going to be in front of them, continuing to update on the progress of the work. Looking at the site development, we looked at, you know, about how many houses are adjacent to this property, it's about 16, which we can see on the map here, but like I said, we still included mailings to 500 feet.
No, you didn't. You did not.
Excuse me.
We have the list that was from the city, so we, we've talked about that at the meeting last week, that if you didn't receive the mailing, your property, or you may have gone in a no-mail list, that sticks with your address, you have to check with the post office on that, I can't answer for it. So the proposed site plan that was utilized and talked about at those neighbor meetings is the one that you see in front of you here. So a few items that we can look at here, and there are changes that have come a long ways, come along the way. So a few of those, when we look at, this may be hard to read, but original plan is what we're really looking at here. So there are more than 10 courts, they are directly adjacent, touching that, not touching, but directly up to that lot line with the buffer. The parking lot was right to the corner of the lot line and the Highview Road connection, Highview Road connection's obviously there. There were additional set of courts to go south of the ones that you see that are existing if a current phase came, or a further phase, and then also the green space that's within that. So that became the baseline of what we talked about, I guess what I would call the baseline, that we shared out and talked with neighbors about in the month of May, when we had about eight or 11 people that we interacted with that came out. Following that, we made some adjustments to the property, to that area. So that was included in a second neighbor mailing and included with other communications we've done in that time. So we explored a hammerhead at the top of Highview Road, that came from some feedback. We've had a variety of stakeholders, right? We have a variety of neighbors tonight, but we have a lot of stakeholders that reach out on other aspects too, and working with police and fire. So the hammerhead at the top of Highview Road came from recommendation or for us to explore that from the city. So we've added that in since, we've shifted tennis courts further away from the property. This image probably shows a little better, if you can't see the writing, but you'll see the difference in this image from prior. So really, hearing from the neighbors, shifted away from property line as much as you can, conserve as many trees as you can, if we're not going against the easement at all to mitigate. So you see the tennis courts have shifted west on the property, the parking lot has completely shifted west away from being adjacent to any lot lines, the water retention is up in that space, the field remains. We also have parking that's been a part of all of these, that's the number one on the map, the lower number one, I guess I should say. That's about 70 spots, I know that's created some question about the amount of flow and traffic during the school day. Nothing has changed in our school procedures for drop-off and pickup for families, for buses, for student drivers. They will all continue to enter on 51st like they always have, that has not changed, that is not planned to change in the next three years or past fall of '28 when this is complete. Those 70 spots are the addition, there'll be staff parking spots. From feedback, we will ensure they're assigned to staff, and that we know who's going back there, it's not students. Another piece of feedback that came after the, some different interactions with community and neighbors, has been to the right of that lower one, there will be a gate put in, that's like the backside of the Saber Center, to cut off or eliminate the ability, minimize the ability for cars to try to drive around the building and make their way around. We'd heard that there was worry about, like, high school kids are smart and they'll find a way around it, well, we can work to block that, along with the communication that we'll continue to, to have. Site plan development, this, this is looking at the difference between what was that, I guess I called it a baseline when I was presenting now, and now this first iteration that came out of different interactions with the city, the fire department, the police department, and also through some of the neighbor interactions and other communication we've gotten through our reach out with the FAQ on the website or direct contact. So we've made some different adjustments. I think one that I forgot to mention earlier with the Highview connection is that fire and police have both said that that is absolutely needed as a life safety aspect, to have a building this size, even without the additions going on, you need access to the east side of that building. Unfortunately, we're in a day and age where not only can kids just get injured in sports and you need quicker access for ambulance, but you also need to be training, as we do every year, for active shooters, you need access for safety vehicles and other access to the building. So that's another reason for the Highview connection, that was obviously put in in the, was it the '90s, I think we saw in our aerial image already. Some of the other adjustments that came off of this is that landscape, looking at more density within that, there wasn't a specific landscape plan in the first one. We reduced from 16 courts to 13 courts, tennis courts that is. We looked at the east-west detention pond, so kind of shifting that pond, you've noticed that's even shifted from the prior image, looking at some of that landscape along the east side, I'm sorry, the south side that you didn't see as much earlier. east side, I'm sorry, the south side that you didn't see as much earlier. And we added a retaining wall adjacent to the residential homes from some of that feedback. We also had looked at and had already included like lower light poles for the tennis courts. It's more, but it reduces the light pollution, so it's not reaching out as far, and worked with lighting experts to ensure that that's what we have in there. So not only those tennis courts moved away from the lot line, those lights have been adjusted. We also looked at after this, activity times for that space, and so we had said the lights off for all the areas we can, parking lots, I think by city ordinance have to have some, but lights off at 10:00 PM, wanted to start those back up to 7:00 AM. The city has different ordinances and other tennis court areas that are lit, we can talk about what that looks like, but we've made the commitment of they're off from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. In that time of July, there was an environmental parks commission meeting, and there was a planning commission meeting. Planning commission tabled this for the meeting that's coming up next week, the 21st, and then there was a recommendation, as we've talked about tonight, to hold another neighbor meeting. So we did do that, we immediately got out the information on the first meetings, the adjustments made in that one-pager, and held a meeting last Monday, which you heard referenced this evening, again, ahead of the planning commission that was last Thursday and the one that's coming up next week. All that was on for last Thursday was our conditional use, and that was tabled, so that all three of the items are showing up on that planning commission next Thursday, and then however that plays out for the September 2nd common council. So this is the update, the most recent update that was submitted to planning commission by their two-week timeline last Friday. So the team hustled to hear the neighbors on Monday to make adjustments. We understand that no one adjustment's going to make everybody happy. I do feel from what I heard tonight, that some of these adjustments are meeting some of the items that were requested, maybe not all of them, but you are being heard and we are adjusting while also still taking into account, there are many that are for the plan that's here and also, most importantly, taking into what our students, what our staff needs are in the future of learning in Franklin Public Schools. So I talked a bit about the traffic in the road, the school day, that traffic not looking any different. We talked about life safety, those are some items I heard this evening, and we heard through those series of three meetings. Through this adjustment in the plan that you're seeing in front of you, like I said, this has been submitted to planning commission for review next week, for next week's meeting. We have looked at and are looking to preserve 1.4 acres, so you see that in the prior two columns, that was zero. So the eight acres you've talked about this evening, preserving 1.4 of that, we're going to do our best to preserve that to what's existing. I think everybody knows as you're moving ground, like roots can get damaged, but we will do our best around that and we'll fill in and create dense buffer there. We've also looked at, when we talk about that space, there's a 30-foot buffer that had been built in all along. So we looked at as a district, how can we, is there an ability to double that? So we did look at the field that's there, it's a practice field, we often refer to it as soccer, but there will be, as you saw in that study, there'll be lacrosse and other activities at practice there. We reduced that to the minimum soccer size. So soccer, WA standards, has a variety of sizes that you can have, much like an outfield fence in baseball. We had a medium-sized one, by no means the largest, we have reduced to the smallest. Possible space to meet that, but still, if we had to hold a JV matchup there, we could. It is the smallest space. We also took that practice space, we shifted it north, closer to the tennis courts. So you'll see in that, in this chart, what was like a 55-foot difference in there is down to about 44. There's only so much shifting we can do, there's different grade, so that will grade down a bit from the tennis courts, and so that's something we had to take into consideration. So trying to minimize that woodland disturbance, preserving those acres, doubling that distance of the 30 feet we had, but then using 30 feet within the school property also. We reduced the courts to 10 and removed that, those future courts that you used to see to the east of what's pinkish-red, you see those aren't there, so we've reduced the option, which was there to increase by two in the future. I think that overall outlines the biggest changes that were made off of that, but I would also, that's kind of the end of the updates to where things are at, and I would ask our team here, if there's anything you have to add that I've missed, or from what you heard tonight that we should address.
The only things I may highlight with that, as noted, the L-shaped or green-shaped around the perimeter, those are the existing trees, the existing vegetation.
That L-shaped, I don't know if that's better or not, that L-shaped that you're seeing there in that darker green color is the existing vegetation, existing wooded area that's there. So what we're targeting with that is to double the buffer zone, if you will, that was 30 feet before, but not just the distance, but with the existing mature vegetation that's through there, as much as possible. And then with that, work very closely to ensure that we're protecting those just as we would all along, so we'll be working closely with an arborist on the team, the general contractors will have somebody on to help flag those trees, identify which ones are to stay, and make sure we're working to do everything we can to preserve those as they start that construction. And then Dr. Benham did note the added gate to separate the traffic movement that would occur kind of in the lower right corner of the image you see on the screen. So it would be essentially as you kind of wrap around the Sabre Center to come through. So if that were the case, that's where that location is that was referenced earlier.
Does anybody, does anybody have questions, comments?
There's one thing I would add, and I don't mean to interrupt, I just thought of this as you were talking about trees. When we were together with the neighbors, many of which are in the room this evening, last Monday, they talked about how the trees were already being marked, the ones that are going to be taken down. We were able to further clarify with point of beginning that that's the tree study that was brought out. They mark the trees because they document them all by size, type, a whole lot of detail about it, as we need to do with the city. And so that's what those markings are, those markings are not the markings of trees that are going down. So I just wanted to clarify that as we looked into that after last week's meeting.
All right, we'll start with Mary and we'll go around.
I took a lot of notes from all the speakers. So as far as potential, as we saw all the flooding, are there, if there is going to be a retention pond, is that, I presume, going to suffice to address the tennis courts, which are taking away the vegetation and things like that?
It is, yeah, it's being designed to meet all the requirements that are being reviewed by the city engineers as part of this. So city engineers had their first pass of detailed reviews, we got those comments through, we're working through those with them. So yeah, everything there related to stormwater, grading, anything required is meeting the DNR standards and certainly is being coordinated with the city folks as well.
And I know Point of Beginning was here on Monday last week and was able to talk a little bit about how the water is moved away from just, not just that pond space. Like I said, they couldn't be here with us tonight, I don't want to call it on anybody else at the table, if they can speak specificity to it, but there has been a detailed study to what that looks like, and we've talked about if we see issues afterwards, we'll talk about it. I personally like the moment at one of the May meetings when a neighbor behind the practice fields talked about different water that he thought was settling in his yard, and POB talked directly with them, went over to the yard to look at that. So, I mean, we're making all the effort, doing all the things that are required and beyond, and just, we will continue conversations if something doesn't work out the way that the best planning has aligned it to work out.
I just wanted to add that, you know, the team, we're all licensed, they're engineers, they're architects, and we have to fulfill our duty to the codes that are put forth. It's black and white, whether it's DNR, whether it's the state, whether it's the local municipality, we have to play by all of those rules. Otherwise, a project never gets started, it never gets built, and it never gets opened. So we're going forward and meeting all of those expectations and requirements, and here in this instance, you know, we're going beyond based on comments and everything that we've heard. So hopefully that can assure you from a code standpoint, right? Water mitigation has to happen on your own property. If we have a thousand-year storm event, that's way beyond anything that's in any code or anything that I can prepare for, so, thanks.
Mary, did you have further questions?
So I know the traffic issue, and so there's that teacher parking lot, but then there's the one right next to the courts. How many spots is that? The one is 70, right?
Yeah, they're both around 70, I think 75 max on the tennis one, if I'm remembering right.
So that tennis one though will not be used during today for student parking or teacher parking, just that teacher parking lot?
The spots that we're talking about, the 70, Mary, in case it's not clear, they're right behind the tan box, which is the Sabre Center.
And that's not, okay.
That's just staff, adding 70 staff spots. Yep.
Okay.
And we lose a few spots next to the football field where that practice space is, so some of it's replacement of a few spots and some addition.
Go ahead, Linda, please.
Can you tell me about conservancy easement, the history and how you work around that?
I can speak to that a little bit. Yeah, so the city of Franklin requires a conservation easement whenever you touch a certain amount of natural resources. Any natural resource that gets touched in the city has to be mitigated in some way, and that includes woodlands, wetlands, floodplains, things in that nature. Due to how much was affected during the Sabre Center construction, the conservation easement was put in place based on the mitigation that was done at that time to build that addition. So in order to build anymore, that conservation easement has to be mitigated again. So everything that is being proposed to be taken out does have to be mitigated again. That would also get put into a new easement.
How are we mitigating it?
So the proposed strategy for the woodlands, there's that section on 50, or yeah, 51st and Drexel, that kind of triangle area in the floodplain, so that is proposed to be filled with trees. And then also on different district property, filling in some of those already existing woodlands with more, more trees in that location.
So there's no loss of the, the same wooded spaces exist?
Yes, to the standards that are set forth for the, from the city. I think there's a slight reduction in the requirement for how many need to be planted.
Yeah, and there's a full submittal that goes in, that was part of the tree study that was referenced earlier. That submittal, in order to go through the city's defined mitigation process, there's a compensation plan, which means how much we're going to replace of what's being taken out, that defines quantities and qualities of trees. All of that has been documented and meets the requirements, we've been coordinating that with, directly with the city, just to be sure we understand that. The city recently went through a new UDO, which is a new ordinance, so they transitioned. So this project was kind of hovering between the old one and the new ones. We spent a lot of time with them, trying to make sure we were tracking with what their expectations were for that. So a lot of dialogue around how best to approach this, with the sensitivity of this conversation along with meeting the objectives and the goals the city has defined.
Just more, so I guess I'm, why do they include this forever clause in these easements?
Yeah, I can't speak, so not the individual to speak to why that is there? Yeah, the...
Because it's, obviously you can replace and trade off, they allow that, but yet...
I would have to defer that to the city or for other conversations, but yeah, I'm not, we were, we're following directly the processes put in place by the city for moments like this, when these things come up, no different than any private development that may have a similar impact or a residential development at some point that wants to add a bunch more houses but has to mitigate. We're following all the same exact processes they would as well.
Thank you.
So generally, a conservation easement would have, would say in perpetuity, but it, but it's, it's, but that, from what I heard tonight, it is, it is what, it is until, until you go to mitigate again.
If not into perpetuity, you have to put a deadline on it or a timeline on it, right? So you're not going to sign an agreement for 10 years or 20 years, you're going to put it into perpetuity with the understanding that if you need it, you have to go through a process to get approvals for that and have to meet the requirements, all of which we're obviously trying to communicate the best we can. We're doing everything we can to be sure we're following.
Sorry, just wanted to follow up on that. Linda, do you have more?
No, that's fine.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Because if we are replacing the trees from this area to another areas on the district itself, can we do anything else to address the concerns of the residents who are immediately to the close proximity of the school, high school itself? Because if you replace the trees from here and replace in some other areas of the city, that I think doesn't address the concerns of the residents itself who are next to the high school itself. So is there anything else which can be done to ensure that, specifically with the recent events and global warming, I think the residents are getting concerned about possible, you know, flooding and all that stuff. So is there anything else which you can do in planning so that, right now we foresee to help address the concerns?
Yeah, and I think that comes down to the stormwater plan, what was submitted to the city. It's a 300-plus-page document, kind of outlining everywhere where the water will go. So as Devin mentioned, that has to happen on-site, the water collection. So from a stormwater concern, that's being addressed through grading, the detention basin, other measures that POB could talk to a little in more detail than I could. But yeah, from just a, just tree standpoint, we are trying to keep as much as possible while still maintaining the functionality of the last bit of site that's left on the high school.
And is it possible that if any of the areas used just for storage of the equipment, that that area be replanted? For example, if any of the areas of the wetland is used for the construction, for storage of the building material, et cetera, et cetera, but after the construction is done, that area is replanted with trees to kind of increase the amount of retention in the soil?
I'll kick the restoration over to Mitch on the end with C.D. Smith, but I'll first address the, you know, is there more that we can do? I think in this latest iteration, and you're seeing the increased buffer, that green, the dark green band that's running around the image, for everybody here at home, north is to the left, 41st is up, that's east of the site. I would, I would imagine, right, I'm not a neighbor, but I would imagine that they would rather have the trees that are already existing be maintained versus anything new being put in, because then again, right, there's the black and white of, okay, well, we need to provide X size in caliper, the diameter, and also in height of the tree, and I'm sure the neighbors would much rather have their mature trees that are already harboring, you know, different creatures and whatnot, and our comfort of home for them. So Mitch, what about restoring lay-down site and stuff like that, back to nature?
Yeah, so basically what we're going to end up doing is getting the site up there to subgrade, which is the grade before you start building up your top foot. We're going to put gravel there so that it's for parking, equipment, and any overflow of materials for the job site. We have to put gravel down there because if it's dirt, it's going to at some point between the freeze thaw and all the rain become a mud pit. So really what we would do is when we're done utilizing that space, we'll strip all of the gravel up, and then we're going to restore the site to grade, and then we'll restore, and that's with putting seed where it needs to go to get the site to look like what the final landscape drawing will be.
Yeah, and I will mention, this plan is really only showing the tree planting along the neighbor's property. There will be more landscaping, you know, in the parking lot area. The city of Franklin has some pretty strict requirements on landscaping, so that's not the only area there will be trees.
The vast majority of the lay-down land is the parking lot and tennis courts. Like, so those will become other amenities, but because they're going to become other amenities, in working with C.D. Smith, that became the option for the lay-down, because it will already be reconstructed then in, or spring of 2028 for that summer.
It offered the ability, because we were already going to develop it. We looked at other spots that we would set up on-site, and there's not really another spot to do it. If this spot wasn't being touched, we'd have to find that, but otherwise it was looking at, trying to, we've looked at trying to be adjacent to the football field, taking away some of the parking spots, it would have major to tear into the, to the drop-off setup with buses, with parent drop-off and things like that. So this also creates a safety aspect, having the workforce that's coming in with C.D. Smith able to check in and access the property that way and be separate than our typical morning routine of the buses, the parents, the student drivers that are coming in and off 51st and looping around the front of the school.
Yeah, I mean, obviously safeties are top priority, and with the flow of the bus traffic, with how we would have to bring any equipment and especially large precast panels, steel beams, columns, trusses, and large materials like masonry block into the site, we wouldn't be able to get it in and out on that side of the school and to be as least disruptive as possible. We want to bring it into the back of the site, have every single person check in with our trailers, and utilizing that backspace, every contractor and subcontractor... and utilizing that backspace, every contractor and subcontractor employee will have to walk by our trailers to check in so that they're not crossing paths with students and staff in the front of the school.
But all those deliveries will come in off of 51st Street from Ryan Road, correct?
Correct, and then they will loop around the back of the school, check in, offload, and then they will come back out.
No materials, no materials will come through on 47th Street?
Correct.
And working with the city, they were, they gave us the direction, right, that we're going to come in on Ryan Road to 51st, and that this is going to be the entrance. So we've worked with the city to develop that.
And again, if this were a quick project, or a one-year project even, it'd be maybe another conversation. This is three school years that we have to be really mindful of our, the movement of construction and all of our students and activities on-site. So this was a discussion at the outset of the project, just to be sure we had an understanding of site logistics and how best to kind of balance all these pieces.
Ma, did you have further questions?
Okay, so I, I guess I am struck by the coordination with our team. I just want to say thanks to everybody on the team for going back to the table again and again and again to meet the needs based on, you know, at the very beginning when we were doing our survey of the entire community and readjusting our plans based on what the whole community said. And then our listening sessions, as you kind of went through with our, our history, we have really worked for two things, to find what's best for our students, but also what's best for our community, and really been listening to that. And I just really appreciate the team's flexibility and creativity and finding, you know, new and different ways to do all these things, trying to meet the needs of everyone. I mean, we have an entire city that we are trying to meet the needs of. And so just, you know, thank you for, for that and that flexibility and creativity. I think it's really helpful. I do have a class, a question, I think somebody mentioned it in the community comment about, you know, what happens if, if the city does not approve these plans? And to me, I know we'll come back, we'll figure something else out. I don't have any doubt in that, we've done it with many other things. But I guess my question is, what is, and maybe it's an impossible question to ask, but what is the cost of delaying? Like, we, I believe we were supposed to already be on-site as of about August 1st so that some of this would be established before our students came back. It feels like we're a little bit delayed now. How much of their, like, what is the cost if we continue to delay? And does that, like, does that increased cost then mean that we don't get some of the things that are planned in this project?
And are there any safety implications in terms of interdigtation with the school year?
I'll get it started and then feel free certainly to jump in. You know, I, this is a complex project, there is no doubt. I think everything is by design sequenced, right? So everything from the design process, the construction documents, the bidding, city reviews and approvals, the engagement of the city engineers, all the way through to making sure we're safely managing a project of this size with, with an active site. And so even though it feels like a lot happening very quickly, this, this is what this team is built to do. This is the, the level of knowing the complexity. So it's not a surprise to the team. It's been mapped out in advance. And again, it was one of the reasons we started meeting with the city months ago on a monthly basis, to be sure we were, again, building towards what we knew was going to be a tight window for approvals and starting construction. And so there is no doubt that if, if not approved, it would mean likely we would need to come back still for a approval. But we would need to reengage with the district team to figure out what does that mean specifically? Is it, nothing can happen there? Is it a partial of what you see here? It likely means that the program you see on the screen is not all there. I think what you're seeing here represents a paired, the most paired-back version of getting the program in as was targeted leading into the referendum, okay? And so stepping back would likely mean needing to start to pull program off of what you see here, meaning no practice field or no tennis courts, or, right, no access drive. You know, and we've talked about the reasoning behind all of those things. And so all of that takes time to redesign and resubmit to the city and get back in sequence for plant commission approval. So that pushes out multiple months for, for that, just as a reality. It's not a scare tactic or a wait, it's just a reality in, in that, in that process. And I say yes, the C D Smith team is queued up to, we have the first bid package complete. We have, you know, those vendors lined up, ready to, to start movement as soon as we give them the green light to do so. But permits have to wait for approvals, right? So all of that's stacked up, just so that as soon as we get the green light, we can submit, and everything sets in motion. So it does, you know, so if it's a one-month delay, you can assume everything pushes out. But in the end, the reality is it doesn't do a ton of good turning over large sections of this building mid-school year. So all of this is set up for multiple phases to be turned over in the summers so that we can start school years and start the next pieces. So less just saying if we're one month late now, or one month late at the end. Reality is it means like, we're not starting school in those spaces as we currently have targeted. So it has a compounding impact other, other ways. Always means of working through that, right? And this is, again, a complex project, but that, it would have downstream impacts for sure.
Well, and I, like, I just want to say, like, I have all the confidence in the world that we will come to some agreement. But that's kind of what I was getting at, is if this is not approved, we really do start impacting student experience and cost to taxpayers. And, you know, planning, like you said, three years down the line, we, you know, it will not...
The, the cost to taxpayers will not change. We cannot go over the referendum.
The cost for the dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Experience.
Right, and, and the idea that, you know, if all was, that's why I'm asking, I guess, maybe, correct me, but could it be that, yeah, we still have the same amount of money to spend, but now because we have been delayed, we have to take something out of? And, I mean, that's what we're seeing. We're, we are already taken out of what we thought we were going to get in order to make these adjustments. Are we going to continue taking out either of this? Or would other areas of the project have to have things removed? Would we end up with a smaller pool? Would we end up with different C T E space? You know, any of those kind of things, the walking area in the school? Like, any of those things, would those have to get pulled out in order to meet our budget?
Yeah, I'm confident, say, there will be a full redesign effort to some extent. It would just really depend on what pieces get pulled out and how do we get the timelines back in sync?
Mike, can I have a moment?
Please, sorry.
I just want to, for my clarification, so the additional prac, the practice field to the south of the tennis courts is replacing field space that is lost, that is not new?
Nope. If you're familiar, north of the pool today, there's an area between that and the stadium that is striped, that's used for practice field. This is, in square footage, almost identical in size to that.
Would be maintaining services that we currently have. And then I just want to clarify that the expanded dark green area is not replanted trees, but conservation of mature trees, is that true?
It is.
I, you know, I, I feel for the neighbors. If I were you, I would probably be doing the same thing as you because I have long-term emotional relationships with trees. But I, I feel that we also have to take into account the good of all of the students in the community. And I feel that, that this, you've pared away at your plans numerous times. You've gone back to the drawing board. And for me, as a board member, have, hearing the complaints and then hearing, having heard for months, I, I think that this is a reasonable compromise. Not that you needed to hear that from me, but I just want to say it.
All right, I'll just say that I, I did, I jumped in at the very beginning of this project, like all the board members here. And one of the things, one of the things that we talked about early on was, the first thing we talked about was, do, can the high school function here for the long term, at least until all of us are not here anymore, for the next 20 or 30 years? And the answer was yes. And so we decided, but the answer was also, like you see at Nicolay High School or other high schools that are on similar-sized sites, it's going to be a tight fit, and we're going to have to imagine what we can put in. And it's going to change a lot. It's, there's going to be a lot of iterations, and, and we, and we have to, and we have to work to get things in. But a, but this project is costing $125 million for the high school site. A new high school is roughly $260 million from what I understand. And that was the other option. And we didn't consider it for very long because this, because we believe in the stewardship of the community's money, our money. So I appreciate, I appreciate the work that has been done to get to this spot from everybody. And I, I appreciate, I appreciate the work everybody's done, and I appreciate the conversation. But this, this to me seems like, this to me seems like a good compromise as well. Does anybody else have further comment or question? Mary, please.
Hate to perseverate on, on this, but when they closed Drexel by my house, we had people who initially thought they could cut through our subdivision, and they were going fast. And I called the police, and they said, we've already had one other call, and they immediately got on it. So my understanding, though, is that this is not going to increase student traffic. It's going to just increase teachers accessing that parking lot, and then people attending the tennis matches or practices. It's not going to be an increase in reckless student driving. Is that accurate?
I'll answer, the same, the same number of students, the same number of staff that would be here today if school was today will be the same number tomorrow. So we're not increasing that. But again, we'll have 70 of our staff members instead of pulling in off 51st, we'll be pulling in off 47th.
Yeah, students can't use that parking lot.
Correct, and they can't get access from the back to come around to the front, thinking they might get into the property faster.
All right, does anybody else have questions, comments? All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to item C, tuition waiver, tuition waiver number one. Dr. Bennet or Dr. Mo, I don't know.
Sure. We have two tuition waivers in front of us tonight. We went over tuition waiver protocol last month, so I guess I would just take any questions you have. Otherwise, they follow our typical procedure. You, if you approve them, then they are in for a nine-week waiver. And they can apply for a second waiver by DPI rules, so they could be up to 18 months. Both of these families know that they need to be residents and proof of residency within Franklin School District boundaries by those timeframes, or they're charged tuition for their time and they cannot attend, or they can continue to pay tuition for the rest of the year, I guess.
Move that we prove, prove the tuition waiver as presented.
I second.
All right, are we, is that a motion to approve them both, or?
Tuition waivers as presented, yes.
One and two.
All right, motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Dr. Khan. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Treasurers' report is available in the Board Doc's library. Does anybody have any comment or question on the Treasurers' report? All right, future agenda items, summer school report, Ed for Employment Update action item, Title I programs, student code of conduct, discipline matrix, bullying report, C R C presentations, seclusion and restraint report, health and nursing report, district safety plan and goals review, threat of violence drill review, district administrator goal setting.
One adjustment to that, Title I program, and we are working with Mr. Zimmin today, that does not have to go to the board, so we are going to remove that. I didn't want to remove it today and make it a surprise this evening. It's not something that's typically come to the board. It's not going to change any of our practices or following DPI regulations for that. Title I programs.
Quick question, health and nursing, will our district nurses be presenting at that, or will it just be Mr. Ekman?
The goal is usually to have the nurses here, and if we find out they can't make that day, we can adjust. I'm hearing you want them here, right? Yeah.
Usually they are.
I thought, last year, it seemed like there was just something.
Someone had an emergency, removed it last year, if I remember.
Correct.
All right, anybody else? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapursky, seconded by Mrs. Witkowski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned at 9:17. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jenny, for staying till...